Transit District Board to order. If you can, please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if I can get a roll call, David?
Yes. Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
Mayor Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Mario. Maybe she can wave at us. Mayor Mario? There you go. I guess we got a wave. And Mayor Padilla.
Present, Mr. Chair.
Currently absent is Martinez Flores and Meiji Powe unless Meiji calls in later.
Thank you. And Mayor Padilla?
I don't think we can start.
What's that?
I don't think we can start.
Do we need verbal confirmation? Okay. Under my name, what do you, are you able to unmute by chance?
Maybe call in to do that.
Yeah, I think as Mayor Padilla, I think just for the, to make sure we don't run awry of the Open Meetings Act, then we just need to make sure we have verbal confirmation and we do.
Another book? Yes. Now you have an enhanced quorum.
Okay, and with that, we'll note that at 1:37 PM, Counselor Ivan Flores has joined us. Okay, so we have quorum. We'll move on to agenda. Item number four, which is the approval of the agenda. If I can get a motion in a second to approve our agenda, please?
So move, Mr. Chair.
All right, I have a motion by Mayor Padilla.
Second.
A second by Mayor Hernandez. With that, I'll ask for a roll call for the approval.
Yes, Mayor Flores, I mean Counselor Flores. I'm working backwards now.
I'm here.
Sorry. And this is for, this is a vote on.
I'm not here.
A vote on the approval of the agenda. Sorry.
Well, of course, yes. Approved.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Mayor Mario. Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Excellent. All right, we're on to public input. Are there members of the public that would like to come and speak?
We do. We have two interns. Could we introduce the interns? They'll be our public.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabella Moraga and I come from Santa Teresa and I'm helping at South Central Regional Transit and I help the office with whatever they need assistance in.
Awesome. Thank you and welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Destiny Soto. I'm a high school student at Santa Teresa High School and I'm interning at South Regional, South Central Regional Transit and I also help with whatever is needed.
Awesome. Thank you and welcome. Thank you for joining SCR TD and representing ST for, and here in Dodona County, so.
We also, I'd also like to introduce our new senior accountant for this SCR TD, Rosa Talamantes.
Awesome. Welcome, Rosa.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, that, I believe that'll conclude our public input. All right, on to agenda item number six, which is the approval of the South Central Regional Transit District meeting minutes from May 28, 2025. I can get a motion in a second to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve with one correction and that's to changing the RTD chair from my name to yours.
Did I miss? Okay. So we have a motion by Mayor Padilla with noting one change needed in the minutes. If I can get a second, please?
Second, Hernandez.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Hernandez. Are there any other comments or any other changes of note? I think when then we'll note that the, it'll be only to, the only change noted is to change the chair from Mayor Padilla to myself. You're a fixture. Come on. You want to run this for old times' sake? Okay, so I have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes as, as with the changes noted. If I can get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Mario. Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Counselor Flores.
Yes.
All right, those minutes are approved. Thank you so much. We're on to the Executive Director's Report by Mr. David Armijo, who's, just did they explain to you how to use?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
We're moving back to the 20th century. All right, let's see if I can do this. Good afternoon, David Armijo, Executive Director. I decided to make this a fairly simple Executive Director's Report. We're in the process of doing something that's historic. We're always doing historic things at the district and as of Monday, we will initiate our first Vanpool program, operating up to Truth or Consequences and providing services to the veterans. So let me roll into that. So as an introduction, SCR TD will launch a new Vanpool service on Monday. There'll be five people in that Vanpool. We've worked out a fair policy of, I believe it's 250 a month. So they're paying $50 a month, something like that. It's a pretty good deal. We are subsidizing part of the cost and we are using some other grant funds for that. The vehicles were actually bought through the DFA as part of our program four years ago. We've been using them for other purposes because we were not able to form. We've had a couple of attempts to perform Vanpools, but this is the first one that with a Vanpool, people came to us. So we did a really good job of setting that up, but there was a lot of work to that. I'll go through that here in a minute. It's going to support the healthcare staff working in the rural communities and more specifically for the veterans up in TRC. It was actually one of the initial projects we started to work on and we're just never able to get that to work. And the closest we came was helping to set up a Vanpool that then the veterans did themselves. So, you know, we provide technical assistance sometimes even though we don't do it ourselves. So we're happy to be able to put this one together. The start date again is Monday. It's going to go from Las Cruces to Truth or Consequences with a round trip distance of 150 miles. The vehicle will be a 15-passenger van, five registered riders for healthcare staffs, and it'll run from 6:30 in the morning to arrival about 8:30. So it's about an hour and a half. Again, the monthly fare is about 200, actually 250 because that was five people. So it breaks down to $50 a person. The part, we partnered with the New Mexico Veterans Home and of course we're providing the van. We're handling the insurance. So all the capital costs, we're picking up the insurance and, and the driver will take the responsibility of moving the vehicle. We're providing a fuel cart. So we're paying for the fuel. They'll have to do a daily mileage log and then provide weekly ridership reports. And the vehicle is paid through the New Mexico DFA funds, as I mentioned. Most importantly is all those ridership numbers that we get then goes back into our national transit database and actually generates more revenue for us from the state. So we're actually going to get a little bit of a dividend from that. This is the facility. If you've never been up to New Mexico State Veterans Home, so it's a nice facility. There's some really good photos of that. So it's a good area. Very excited we're able to provide this program. And quite frankly, it's a very simple presentation. So in conclusion, you know, we're launching the program. We hope to do more of these. We have other vans coming in into our grants. We'll work with our partners, the state, New Mexico DOT, and we hope that we'll be able to do more of those. We had tried to work on some of those with BIA over in, in Santa Teresa and I even worked with the private sector. BIA is a challenge. So we just weren't successful. Now that we're the private operators. So that doesn't mean that it can't be. We think the priority for BIA and Santa Teresa is coming from Las Cruces. So hopefully what we learned from this one will help us as we move forward in working with BIA. And we're now a member of the, of the alliance there. So we're kind of excited about this opportunity. We again, we think it's a model for rural mobility and expansion. The Vanpools go all across the state. There's a lot of other Vanpools happening up north, but down south, it's been a real trial to get these things to work. So we hope this positions us for future grant and other partnership opportunities. Any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Counselor Flores, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Armijo. So the facility is the endpoint, is that the?
Yes.
Okay, the terminus?
And Loretta's handling the operations. Where they get started? Okay, we did work that out. Try to make it simpler for that.
And would it be possible to, sorry, for Loretta to use the, hit the microphone so we can?
Yeah, just so that way we can make sure that anybody on the phone can listen in.
So they'll be picking up the van at Mesia Valley Hospital.
The one on?
The riders that will be riding with them will park at Ashley Furniture and the driver will pick them up from there. And they're very used to parking over there.
So that's a facility on Del Rey?
Uh huh.
Yeah, okay. And so how many veterans do, will be?
Well, these are the people that support the veterans. I don't know how many veterans at the hospital. I want to say 150, but I don't know why I think of that. Somebody must have told me that a long time ago.
Probably. I don't recall.
Yeah, I don't.
May not be that many, so.
Yeah, they have a small amount, but that's, it's really good to have that service for our veterans.
We'll find out. Again, we'll add this to our website. I think it's a good thing. And then of course, hopefully there'll be more opportunities to form vans elsewhere. And we'll start to see if that could be something we add to our, our efforts. So we're kind of excited about this. So we put it together in, what, less than 10 days?
Wow. Well, thank you very much for your efforts. Veterans deserve that and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flores. Are there any other questions? Looking forward to it. See how this, as you're adding to the service. I think it'll be interesting to learn from. I did want, and if, I don't know if we want to touch it at all. I just quickly, just want to let the rest of the board know about the meeting we just had before this. I don't know if you want me to highlight it or if you want to explain it.
No, please.
So just for the board, to be aware, myself and David and Adam, as well as Mayor Hernandez, who I know he came in a little bit late into the meeting, but we had met with David Harris, who's in charge of the mobility programs from NMDOT, as well as Mo Moabed, formerly of, formerly of the county, who's now the Deputy Secretary for highways, highway operations. We had a quick meeting with them, both, it was a hybrid meeting via Zoom as well as here in the chambers. But we had a discussion regarding the funding that comes from the El Paso MPO within the various funds and that we're entitled to. And this has been an ongoing issue. I think we've probably mentioned it many times through our meetings of trying to establish a regular way in which we can ensure that we're getting those funds from the El Paso, the city of El Paso and the El Paso MPO. And so we had had a meeting with NMDOT trying to become a direct recipient of these funds rather than having to wait and go through the city of El Paso because that's been a battle. And I know Mayor Padilla can probably, can attest to that because he's been working with David at the forefront of trying to get these funds for us. And we have had some of them, but they're critical for the continued growth of operations. But we had a good meeting. The, what came out of it, it seems like, and this is David, if you want to add in here after, make sure I don't miss anything, but it sounds like NMDOT is willing to meet with our federal partners to try and come up with an agreement. While we might not be a direct recipient for the funds, but if we can get some agreements settled between the different entities where we can ensure that we are getting our funding in a timely manner, that might be, still give us the desired effect. So I think it was a good meeting. I don't know, David, if you want to add any more to that?
No, I think you captured it. Our quest is to get to the governor. The only person who can make this decision at the end of the day is the governor. Unfortunately, the complexities of the urbanized area includes, well, Texas and New Mexico were one of the few in the country that has that. So that requires the governor of Texas to agree. So it's a pretty high mark. I think the essence of the meeting, as the Commissioner Sanchez laid out, is we came up with a path, in first part being that this, although the secretary was unable to be on the call, that the state of New Mexico will join us. That's a far cry from where we were six, seven years ago when it was Sunland Park and SCR TD trying to bring the system up. And we're also having to educate a lot of the players. MPO, we're not fully aware with how this process works. That's all in the past now. We're a lot further along. The issue now really comes into getting the funding that we should be getting for the state, not going to El Paso. That's an equity issue. I have no doubt that the governor would, will agree with that. The other issue is how do we administratively speed these funds forward, as Adam could very well attest to, that we haven't seen the funds yet for the last two years. There's lots of reasons on that. There's some issues on our end as well as the other end. But the bottom line is if we're designated, that's not a problem. The other side of it is we're now escalating this issue on our side because we're now running 10% of our service in the city of El Paso urbanized area. We're only getting funded from the New Mexico side of it. Now we want the El Paso side. And that's going to change this ballgame and I'm sure there's going to be folks that are not going to be happy with that. But that's, that's how it works. And the city of El Paso Sun Metro is having to address that issue with the county of El Paso and Socorro and the new EPATs providing services. So the reality is, this is just how it works. I came from LA Metro. We had 25 agencies and we had to split the money through all those at different locations. Long Beach, Santa Monica, these are big areas. 10 million people with the counties. So, you know, if they can make it work, we should be able to make it work here. So there's a number of issues. So today's meeting, I think, was a good start. I was a little nervous because I wasn't sure where Dave would go, but I think Dave Harris has the history and I think that helps us. His first and biggest challenge is going to the FDA. He offered that discussion. We were not getting a lot of support or interest from them. So, you know, second chances, maybe that'll change. But today's meeting was a good meeting. I thank our, our chair for being, being involved. I think all of this and anything that's going to happen for this is going to come from you all. It's got, this is a political issue. I mean, the staff, we can only do so much. At some point, the politics have got to take control. And we really want to get the fair return, our money here in New Mexico.
Yeah. And just so we know, it's like, we're estimating, David, you're estimating about $300,000 a year of funding that. year of funding that could be coming in, which is significant for where we're at for the SCD. But I think SCRTD particularly at this stage where we've grown, but there's also been that, that piece of it where you guys have, where the team has gone and gotten funding through various grant sources for additional capital assets, additional, you know, vans and buses and so on and so forth. So, it just shows, you know, if we can get all those levels of funding, not only, you know, do we not have to struggle as much with the continued funding for operations, but with that grow, with that money, we can have growth and affect more people with this. And I think that's the key piece for, for myself.
Right. If I can make one last comment, I wanted to share a conversation with Mayor Hernandez. I was just talking a little bit about the future for Mecia. Not, there wasn't time to put it in this presentation, but this last week, work that Tim McDaniel had done before he left was to produce, to gather a, what I call a bus pool for seniors in Sunland Park. You're not even thinking where, what's going on by, by the way. But anyway, working behind the scenes and the staff, I was able to pick up where Tim left off and I created the bus route, the design, the whole works, sent that over to the staff on the weekend. That's why we don't have, it was like Saturday, Sunday and I, working with the city manager. We think we have a way to fund the project. It's a half day, two trips, AM, PM. It's right there in Sunland Park. It'll involve a bus. It's about 50,000 or so a year. We'll get funding from the state. Half of it, that means the city will have to come up with 25K. And I know it's after the budget, so there's going to have to be some dancing here, which is why you probably don't know about this yet. But the reason I want to close the loop with Mr. Mayor Hernandez is that what I was saying when we were talking earlier, we've been going after buses like crazy. And because we have buses now, excess and vans, when we got the call two weeks ago to do the van pool, we had a vehicle because we planned for it. When we got the call to work on this issue for Sunland Park, we already had, we have more vehicles coming in this summer. So, we knew we had those vehicles. So, the difference with SCRT Day today compared to five years ago, five years ago, we're trying to survive. We couldn't do this, you know? And so, things are changing. It doesn't mean that we're rich, we're still, and he's going to give you a budget here and present this in a minute, but, and, and close the loop with, with the mayor, we need to know and be able to work more closely with your community as we do with Sunland Park. Now, Sunland Park is in our neighborhood, so it's a little easier for us to have those conversations, but we have to reach out and do the same thing in Las Cruces and elsewhere. And we'll talk more about that. So, I, you know, I think the mission of this organization is evolving, quite frankly, even beyond where we started. So, I think that's all good news. And that's why I think this seems like a small event here. I think this is bigger than it would appear, just like when we did the blue route and we went to Sierra County. So, it almost killed us, but you know, we managed to pull that off. Anyway, that's the end of my, my comments. Thank you so much for your input. Anything else? Chairman?
Mayor Padilla?
Mr. Chair, and David, is, in, in the conversation with us servicing, you know, 10% of our service area in El Paso, is there, does that open the opportunity for them to say, well, no, we're going to take care of that service area and our service would stop at the state line?
Interesting question. So, and I have to ask Adam to add a line item to his budget that he's not going to present to you yet, but the city of El Paso has asked us to pay them $5,000 a year for three bus stops in El Paso. And the state of New Mexico has agreed to that, so I guess we have no choice. I've been against it, but now I figure, okay, we'll do it. But if we're going to do it, we want to be where we want to be. So, in, in the case of the yellow route, our biggest route that goes into downtown, we were pushed out of the transit facility because there wasn't room. And so, we had to take the city street. Well, they want to charge us 5,000 to park on the street to drop off and pick up our riders. We think that should change. I bring that up as an issue because it tells you that the math on this is one in which we don't have the kind of cooperation. I worked in LA, 2,000 buses, 10 million people. We never charged anybody to park at Universal Studios, Long Beach, Santa Monica. Why? You know why? Because all you're doing is moving the money around. Because when I'm done and I ask for more money from El Paso to the urban area, they're going to pay me and then I'll pay them. So, all we're doing is writing checks to each other. It's insane. And I hope somebody realizes that, again, on the political side and says, you know what? So, in my view, it's not up, it's not in my value to fight the issue. I'll pay you, but then you're going to have to pay me. So, we're, we're going to, that's the game we're going to play, you know? So, we'll go from there. So, I'm not sure I've answered the question or not.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Close enough. Yeah. Yeah. So, we juggle. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Padilla.
I don't know how I changed this to the other one. It's not doing it. Oh, he's doing it. Here we go.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm going to try and keep this short because there's a lot of slides, so I'll just do kind of high level. What I wanted to do with this presentation and, and do this before Adam does his budget is that when you see this presentation, you get a sense of what's going into that budget. So, there's a number of projects. And the reality is, we have so much money in capital, we have so many projects, a lot of things go year over year. The key to the state money is we always have to get it encumbered in the year or we lose the money. Again, that's another issue of urban funds and being a designated or direct recipient over being sub-recipient. We get three to four years to spend the money down. We don't have to do this in one year. So, we're racing right now and we're giving priorities to the little projects because we have time to do the bigger projects, but I'll go through that. As far as infrastructure facilities, the biggest projects are the ones listed. The Venus Project Development, which is the bus facility that's going to be on the East Mesa, we're going to take two to three years to do that project. We have now completed the NEPA process. That's the first part. The next step is to actually begin moving towards acquisition and design of the property, which means getting back involved with the FDA. We had a lot of challenges last time we did it. We hope we can find a way to fast track that disco round. We're also working on a bid solicitation. It shouldn't say 2027, it's actually 25, but it would be completed by 27. I think that was my thought. So, when we look at infrastructure facilities, we obviously, we have the Sunland Park microtransit that we've talked about. That's already underway and we're in the engineering process. So, we hope to complete that within the next few weeks and then begin construction and commissioning by the end of the summer. And then, we'll integrate that with our EV charging that we have. We're looking to expand that beyond the one small EV that we have. The Anthony Parking Lot Project, that is funding from the current budget year for rehab. We've rehabbed that building already. If you remember, it was a pretty much a dirt parking lot, so we, we filled that in as an asphalt. We ran out of money, so now we're finishing that part of the project. Last year's project was to redo the garage doors, repaint the building and so on. So, we've been working on that. Now, the property was worth about 230,000, 235,000 about five years ago. I think now we're somewhere over 400,000. So, as we took, put investments into it, it actually has returned our investment to us. And remember, that money for that property acquisition came from the state, the legislature. That's where we got it. So, we're doing pretty good. We're not paying rent, you know, we own it. And then, there's a new grant program. I'm just getting started on that. $25 million becomes available July 1st. It was passed by the legislature for solar canopies. And so, this is available for anybody in the state. I'm hoping to look into that because I'd like to put some canopies to cover the buses from heat. And if we can also do it and tie it into our solar project, we'll, we'll do that. So, that's, that's on, that's in the development stage. Other projects in there include resurfacing and expansion of the property. This new grant that we got from the, from the state that goes into effect October 1st was awarded last month in June, gave us $170,000 to resurface the property over at Sunland Park. So, property's a little bit old and the concrete, so this will be a good place to go for that. And also money in there to add another maintenance base. We're going to expand the building that we have. There's only room for two buses in there at a time. Other elements we're working on now, we're playing catch up, but we're looking to add electric security gates, really meaning here is like trying to gate, but also have a passcode. We're trying to find a way to secure the building. Even the building, coming into the building, people have keys. Our maintenance people used to have keys. We have a new maintenance contractor. There'll be no keys. Everything's locked. We have cameras, more lights. Yes, you know, we want to know who's there. And I'll, I'll tell you, I've told this story before to my staff. On the day of 9/11, I was riding a bus in Orange County. I had about 400 buses and I had 30-plus security sheriff's deputies on, on contract lieutenant. I switched buses to get to my office quickly. I called everybody in. We went to 12-hour shifts. First thing my lieutenant asked me, because we had a leased facility, but just our employees in Orange, was have you checked to see if everybody's here? Okay, I'm in the middle of a lot of things, you know? Do I need to do that? He says, yes, you need to do that because in the early hours, we didn't know who were, who was going to be under attack. We knew airports and other things, we're looking at the waterfront, Orange County, California, 3 million people, anything could happen. So, it took us about an hour, but because we have gate keys and cards, we were able to assume who was, who was not there and then start the phone tree to figure out, okay, did they not come into work, something happened to them, whatever else? It took us a few hours, four hours, to, to track over people and our equipment, our buses and stuff. So, things happened in an unusual situation, but what we learned is that we did have systems in place, but they're very slow. So, right now, we have no system in place. There's no way of knowing where all this goes. The buses do have GPS and stuff. We can find that out and track it. Our central dispatch has all these abilities and we're doing some things, a program called SAM-SERA, and we're putting some other systems on there. So, we're playing catch up right now, even in our own system. And there's nothing worse than having a bus stolen or something happening and you watch it on television. So, if it's going to show up, at least we want to know that we're the ones calling law enforcement and not, you know, being called in. So, a lot, a lot of work to be done with that. We think we should have the gates and all that in place by December. Again, I mentioned solar canopies. We hope to tap into some grant funds for those. Microtransit service launch, that's still targeted for January. There's a lot of work to do. I'm working on the back office, getting all the software and other systems in place. We've got the vehicles and more coming. So, that, that's, should happen. We'll see how, how that goes. Fleet and service expansion, again, we've got new buses and deliveries. We've taken quite a few in this year. We hope to integrate more vans and hybrid buses into some of our, not just the microtransit that rolls out next year, but also our regular services. So, brand and deploy immediately as, as they go. Fleet expansion still includes bus shelter installations, so we are doing some internally. As I've shown before, we've actually put our own shelters out there for about $1,000. It's a pretty good deal. We're working with the city of Sunland Park. They're actually working on redoing Futurity across from the casino where everything's going to change, even when I have to remove the shelter I'm showing here. There will be some money in there. We're going to cooperate with the city and provide some of our capital money for the shelters. And actually, I'm turning it over to them. I'm going to let them install it and let them work with their contractors. I have full confidence the city manager can get that done. So, I'm outsourcing that process. So, we hope to do more of those and look at other areas in the county. Fleet and service expansion, again, this senior van program we already talked about, again, an example, we won't be using that van because that's electric and it, it wouldn't make it through the day, so we'll use other vehicles. Other things we're looking at will be peak hour service. We're looking at services like the yellow route. We actually, we're having standing load issues, although that's kind of slowed down right now, so it's not as big of an issue, but at some point, we'd like to add another trip. The turquoise in Chaparral probably has the most need. It's one of the fastest growing services. And by the way, the copper route in Mecia is the fastest growing line right now. We did like, I don't know, 80 or 800, I can't remember what it was, a lot of trips. So, we doubled our ridership. Now, I've been told it has to do with a driver, that's our senior driver doing that. So, we have a lot more work to do. A lot of these are internal aspects. We'll be retiring some more vehicles. In fact, the last, the next order of buses being retired are the first buses we got back in 2016. So, it's amazing, eight years later, technically 2015, but we didn't put them in service until 2016. So, those will go, we should have, you know, do we light a tree or something for that? Would we do, light a candle? I don't know, we say goodbye to them. They, they lasted longer than anyone thought. I think, aren't we saying a couple of them are approaching 400,000 miles? 400,000 miles in eight years? That's incredible. So, anyway, we'll be phasing those out and we're working with the FDA to shut those down. So, other grants, we'll get some new agreements in the next couple of weeks through the state for the award. The award that we got for June, I haven't had a chance to do that presentation, we were, once again, based on performance of seven categories, we're number one in the state. So, we're continuing three years in a row. We lost out on the ridership, though, it's disappointing, we're number two, but, but we did well on cost. We're one of the most cost-effective system in the state. Nothing because we don't have enough people. That's it. We're slavery. New Mexico Magic Fund is unbelievable. I'll present more on that next month, but we, we're continuing to get more money for our grants. We're looking at about 900,000. I think now with this 1.7 million coming in, we're, yeah, they're, they're becoming the biggest provider of services to this, to the district. And it's over a course of several years. And we'll continue to apply for capital operating project match. And then, we're doing an asset management plan. So, when we finish the 10-year plan that we're doing right now with public outreach and come back to this board in a few months, couple of months, we'll talk about the financial plan. Because at some point, we have to decide, have we ordered enough? Are we, are we too far? How do we balance that out? You know, because we've been quick to get a lot of stuff in here, but you know, how do we do the sustainability? Legacy grant closeouts, I mentioned that already, so we're working through those and then submit financial performance report. Adam will start getting ready to do the, the annual audit through the process. Again, we were talking about the designated recipient, continue to work with New Mexico DOT and prepare systems for our other funds. And then, this one is one that we're looking forward to. We have a new accounting system, working on software. We've been working with some of our other providers to get some feedback on that, including, I think we sent something over to the county look at as well, but we haven't gotten that feedback. Anyway, we hope to fully implement the software in the coming year. These systems never happen quickly, so hopefully that's going to improve the way that we, you know, track our documents and our financials. 10-year plan, I mentioned that. We're, we'll be coming with a, with a report in the next two months. Try to finalize a plan with our outreach and align our services with funding. And then, we're now moving more aggressively on the marketing and communication side. We think that's a very weak part of the agency. We're actually kind of lucky that we've been successful with such a limited source. I've had Christina Gamboa, who's listening to us right now, moving in that direction. So, there's a number of things she's doing. We opened up some advertising with KBI and that's, that's actually getting some good results on that. We've had discussions with some other ones. We had them actually help produce a English and Spanish, so we have both and those are and Spanish, so we have both, and those are being run right now, a few spots in El Paso and in southern New Mexico, of course, Sunland Park and that area. Some of those get picked up in Las Cruces as well. So we'll continue to work on these strategic initiatives, and then staff expansion, we're, we're still pretty slow in that, I think we're going from like 43 to 46, is that about right, Adam? So it's still modest, and of course, we're, we have made a decision on the microtransit staffing, whether or not we still might decide to do a private contractor for that, we'll see how the funds work. And then the last is, we're still working on development CDL training program, and looking at launch Sunland Park Center and certify and recruit drivers, and that could be something we do in-house, as well as something we do in the region. And that's the end of my presentation. No more slides. Any questions?
Thank you, David. Mayor Padilla?
No, nothing, I just want to offer that the city has recently hired a communications coordinator, so if that is of any help to the Transit District, feel free to reach out, and I can connect.
We, we met her, we'd like to steal her, by the way. I might make her an offer.
Well, David, be careful. No, she's a great asset.
She is very good, she's very good. No, we wouldn't do that to you. So, no, but yeah, help us find somebody else, too. We're looking for people.
You wouldn't do that, not on the record, though.
Not on the record, no. Awesome, thank you so much.
Appreciate it, thank you, David. All right.
Yeah, I, I was going to see, this is, is this going to be improving the annual budget, or, I mean, the, or are we doing the finance report before the annual budget?
No, this is for the annual budget for fiscal year '26.
Got it, okay. If I can get a motion in a second to approve item number, agenda item number nine, which is the SRTD's budget for the fiscal year 2026. All right, if I can get a motion in a second to approve.
So moved by Flores.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilor Flores, I will second the motion, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. There are several pages, you'll notice that both revenue and capital are a couple of pages long. I tried to make it so that you are able to see everything, and this page here has to do with the personnel costs. I've organized it in, by departments, basically administrative staff, maintenance section, as well as the transportation section, amounting to a total of $2,010,851.50. This amount is due to the increase in the number of drivers or operators that we currently have, because we have expanded the routes that we are currently running, as well as adding on a couple of more. So this will accommodate the current service that we do have, as well as adding in new service down the road, what we're planning on with the, the senior program, as well as the van pull, to accommodate those particular amounts as well. That does amount to, as far as personnel is concerned, so, no, that's the overall, I'm sorry, the, it amounts to 61.9% of the total expenditure budget is for personnel services. Under employee benefits, it is, this here's the expenditure slide, actually, I've got a couple of pages for that, okay, for the expenditure side, is an increase of 18.4%. Looks like they're going to be looking at our employee benefits, health insurance, and all the employee benefits that we get through there. It looks like it's going to be down for the next year. Ironically, they requested information from me so that they could pay some back, and I asked them, okay, how much are you looking to pay back? Well, I haven't heard from them, so, your guess is as good as mine, but based on our current costs for those benefits, it, it's down a tad from what it was. Next section would be the other expenditures. The blue highlighted line items are the sub, are the subtotals for the sections below. Very first one is travel and maintenance, for a total of $325,000. And you'll also notice also, on the far right column, is the percentages. These are the percentages over the previous year. You'll notice there's a lot of negative, because we moved into Sunland Park facility now. We did make some purchases to bring everything up to date in that facility, that was furniture purchases, computers, electronics, that sort of thing. Over the next year, we're not going to have those major purchases anymore, we're going to just pay for service. So that does bring down our costs under those particular sections. Let me get back to this, travel and maintenance, it is an increase over the previous, or correction, it's a decrease over previous year of 16.58%, but it does amount to 10% of the overall budget. Supplies, 27,000, that is also a decrease. The insurance, that unfortunately is an increase. There was some discounts that we were getting in the current year that unfortunately, we're not going to get in the next fiscal year. And we are getting our insurance through New Mexico Self Insurance Fund, so I don't know if everybody else who is in that particular pool is seeing that as well, but, and unfortunately, it hit our vehicle insurance quite high. That was to add vehicles to the insurance, but we're not going to get a 50% discount like we were doing in the current year. Then there's the contractual services, that is $108,200, that amounts to 3.33% of the overall budget, and then there's the operational costs of $125,350, a total of 3.86% of the overall budget. That gives us $3,246,648.84, an increase over last year of 7.86%. These are the expenditures to date, or, or that we have derived for the fiscal year '26. Is there any questions regarding expenditures?
Board, any questions? Not seeing any.
The next slide has to do with our capital. You'll notice capital, I think I got three pages worth, and that is because it has just blown up. We've gotten so much, and we are getting funding from several different funding sources. This amounts to a total of, oh, I'm sorry, this is the revenue side, I jumped right into capitals, very sorry about that. The revenue side is a total of $3,878,719.63. That is, thank you, that is an increase over last year of 22.8%. You'll see, based on this slide here, that the expenditures being $3,246,648.84, we should have a remaining balance of about $632,000 that carries over to the next year. Now, these, this is due to some of the matching that we had received, that goes towards capital or, or that we can expend in the next fiscal year. The grants and MOUs, nothing's changed there from the previous, or current year, $132,764.50. The other grants and MOUs, $2,914,122.13. The other source revenues, $708,833, and that has also increased, if you'll notice along the, the side, if the main reason is, is because of the FTA or the 5307 funds that is in the Region Six for fiscal year '24 and '25. Those grants have, or are being applied for, but they're going to be, or we should receive those next year. This has to do with the specifics for the operating revenue. Is there any questions?
Any questions, board members?
The next slide, now we're into the capital. Capital amounts to 900, or correction, $9,228,092.33. That is a decrease over the current year of 47.2%. Main reason is, is because we have purchased several buses that have been, that have arrived, and we have expensed. We also have the facilities that we were in the current year, that will not transfer into the next year because we've expensed it all. Basically, under the capital appropriations sections, there's the 50, there's the 5303/5304, that's planning funds, $90,353.48, 5310, total of $323,001, and that has to do with vehicles, of course, capital. 5311, $744,702.21, and then the local funds and the match, you'll see that it is now a total of $1,707,941.88. Big mouthful, but without these funds, it, these funds actually will be our match towards what we're already receiving from other source revenue. Next section is the 5307, this has, this is the Region Six monies for capital for fiscal year '20, we, there's a little bit from fiscal year '23, then we got fiscal year '24 and '25, which will be paid out next month, or next year, providing those particular capital items are received in the year. Next section, 5339, is $4,781,369.70. You'll notice that a quite large portion being CMAC. The next section is 5339B, total of $159,085.26. This is primarily where we expensed the amounts for the facility, and then the buses that we have received already. And then the 5339C, total of $559,126.80. Again, some more buses under that particular heading. Gives us a total of $9,228,092.33, which is a decrease, but comparing this year to other years, the, it's millions of dollars where we were receiving only a couple million in capital previous years. So David's efforts in getting us our capital has been exemplary, and we couldn't have done it without him, without a doubt.
The gold plaque will be nice.
What's that?
The, the gold plaque will be nice, I don't need the watch, I don't wear one. Or a pin.
And that concludes the presentation for the budget for fiscal year 2026. Is there any questions?
Any questions on capital appropriations or any other parts of the budget?
I just want to thank you, David, I, you know, all of this is like reading Chinese to me, which is not being able to understand it without your presentation, so thank you.
I want to say, you must really like your job, taking care of all of these grants.
Believe me, I am now happy that I have a senior accountant, she will be taken care of presenting the financials, I'll of course do the fiscal year end, and then of course, I'll be around to help, as I am the department head, but my main focus is going to be administering these grants, making sure that the paperwork is all in order, and that we are receiving the funds that we are expecting to receive.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. So, Adam, in terms of grants, you know, irrespective of the source, when you apply for a grant, and then there's, you know, the following years or whatever, of reapplying for that provider, do, do they look at our track record? I mean, do they look at how their money has been used previously?
There, basically what it is, is I noticed that when it comes to the specific grants, especially capital, is there basically, those funds are earmarked for specific purchases.
Right.
And all, when it comes to the operating, they are looking at our track record, they're seeing how we're expending the money. That's where the award systems, as far as the New Mexico DOT, comes into play.
Right, so all of that record-keeping is crucial.
It all comes into play, yes.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flores, thank you.
And so I'm asking for, if there's no questions, I'm sorry, I, I am asking for approval of the resolution to approve the fiscal year '26 budget.
After all that, no. So moved to approve.
And I think we, we already have a, a motion, I believe it was by, in, in a second, so.
I, I said so moved. Oh, there was a move, oh.
Correct, yes, to begin discussion, we had.
Oh, we did, oh. Where was I? Second, I second. It yells me out.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the annual budget for fiscal year 2026. If there are no other comments, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Murillo. Mayor Padilla.
Aye.
And Councilor Flores.
Yes, aye.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Adam.
Yes, sir.
All right, on to agenda item number 10, which will be a resolution approving the SRTD inventory report. If I can get a motion in a second to begin a discussion on this item, please.
So moved by Flores.
Okay, the motion by Councilor Flores.
Second, Hernandez.
Seconded by Mayor Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You have the floor, Adam.
This section has to do with the fixed assets, the current budget, or the current fixed assets. Keep going a little more. Good, down to the bottom, please. Okay, no figures. Thank you very much. Sorry about that, we have to get the gentleman in the back booth to make the adjustments. Sorry about that, I didn't anticipate how tight this was.
It's pretty.
It is, and if you'll notice, the above section has to, has to do with the vehicles. I broke it down per year, so that you can see basically the purchases that we made every year. And you'll notice also that 2025 was the largest influx of vehicles that we have ever had, and all. The amount basically, we have also disposed of the older vehicles, so they are not on this list, and they were all depreciated out anyway, so there was no value left, and all. At the end result, and this is after the purchase of the Sunland Park facility, the amounts that we have poured into the improvements on that facility, and the land that we've received when we purchased that facility, it ends up being that we have a total of $11,199,918.25 worth of capital. That's the two facilities, that's all the vehicles, and the land. I am asking for approval of the resolution to approve these funds, as that requirement is necessary for the next audit. Is there any questions?
We've been busy.
I do have a question.
Yes, Councilor Flores, please.
I, I don't know if it's germane to anything, but I, I, so we, you've gotten rid of all the old.
I removed them from this, yes.
And then what happens tax-wise? I mean, in terms of reporting or?
There's no impact as far as tax-wise, because we are a government agency, there's nothing really to report.
Oh, I see.
It all, it's all reported through the annual audit.
I see, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flores, I think the only thing that we ever do is just have a, we note that they've been disposed of, because you've already been depreciated off of the, the balance books, and so there shouldn't be any impact, correct?
Right, that's very correct.
We also have to coordinate that with the state.
Yes.
The federal.
I think that's something we have to, when we, you know, when we dispose of property being the government or a government agency, I think we, we have to provide, as you, because David noted, that report to the state to make sure they're, they're good with it, and they, they also have a chance to review and approve.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, Mayor Padilla.
And just, I think for the self-insurance fund, I think, because of the additional assets that it accounts for, the increase in the insurance premium, is that correct?
Absolutely.
To just?
And the newer vehicles, that is part of it, as well, the larger vehicles.
Technology. I, I think it's interesting to see, I think it's, it's, it's fun to note, exactly like you said, when you look at, like the way that you laid it out, which purchases were done, and which fiscal year, it is interesting to see how much growth, or finally having those assets come in during this fiscal year, it's, it's exciting to see.
It is, sir.
But back when, I know we, we had discussion a few years ago, or a few meetings ago, about having to purchase many of the used ones to get things going, so.
Our favorite's bus 13, the one we bought on the street.
Yeah.
It was on the street corner with a sign, and we bought it.
Yeah.
No, no grants, nothing, we negotiated and got it cashed on the spot.
Oh, so we've come a long way. Alrighty.
Lot of help, lot of help.
Board, are there any questions on the proposed inventory report? So that, I'll ask for a roll call to approve the inventory report.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Murillo, which we can't hear, Mayor Padilla.
Aye.
And Councilor Flores.
Yes.
The item passes, thank you.
Excellent, all right, we're on to.
I said yes.
Oh, there she is, yay.
Been missing you.
I don't know what the heck's going on with the laptop, I don't know what the heck's going on with the phone, but it didn't allow me to, I don't know, so, sorry.
Awesome, would you, and since you're on, would you like to record a, a vote on the annual inventory report?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
Then you, you're counted, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Murillo.
Make sure the minutes reflect that. Good.
Okay, we're on agenda item number 11, it's a resolution approving and authorizing the filing of applications with the Federal Transit Administration for federal transportation assistance. If I can get a motion in a second to approve the. If I can get a motion in a second to approve the resolution.
So moved by Flores.
All right.
So moved.
I'll take your, I'll take a motion from Councilor Flores and then a second from Mayor Murillo. All right, David?
That'll be fine, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, this is a resolution to approve filing of applications. In this particular case, it will be for our fiscal year urban funds 2024 and 2025. The last time we did this, we had a different lawyer, so John Apple, who's our current lawyer, signed off on all these documents. And so that, we're coming back with this resolution. Adam will take this information once signed today and he'll submit that on to TRAMs for the grant money that we have. And I think that eliminates everything that's been in the queue. It'll still take some time before the state or the FTA approves our grant, but this is the last effort to get it done. This is exactly the same resolution you passed two years ago when we did it for the 22, 23. It was a sunny day.
Awesome, thank you, David.
Any questions?
Any questions on the resolution? All right, with that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, David.
Yes, Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Murillo.
Yes.
Yay. Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Councilor Flores.
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you all so much. All right, then I think with that, unless somebody else wants to talk for a while longer or anything, well, we're at the end of our, at our agenda, so.
One hour.
I will, if I can get a motion in a second to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Councilor Flores.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Hernandez. And so with that, I will call this meeting adjourned at 2:33 PM. Thank you all so much. We will, God, I feel like we're already in July. Our next planned meeting is July 23rd, 2025, so we will see you all next month. Good, thank you.